I'd like to call this November 10th, 2022 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Cobain?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
Ms. Tocheck?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is our district goals. Our district goals remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. In all the decisions we make as a board and as a team, we measure by those three goals. Next is OSBA student achievement. I do believe we have some student achievement today.
Hello? Can we have Logan Zawi and Mr. Mark Hurdle come up here, please? So, this year, we decided that we were going to acknowledge and recognize both staff members and students with our student achievement extra mile award because we wanted to go the extra mile with what we were doing in terms of celebrating as many people as possible. Mrs. Boydham is unable to be here today because she is in Columbus supporting the staff presenters for the OMLA and our Ohio Team of the Year, and she wrote up something that she wanted to say of why she chose Logan and Mr. Hurdle to be the recipients of the extra mile award for Strongsville Middle School. Logan Zawi is an eighth grade student at Strongsville Middle School and is currently on the Dragon Team. Logan exemplifies what is means to be a model Mustang. Not only is she dedicated and resilient in the classroom, but she is collaborative and inclusive to all at Strongsville Middle School. Her personal character is what made her stand out for this recognition. She tries to do her best in all that she does, whether it's helping in our office, performing on the volleyball team, answering questions in class, or including others at lunch. Logan is a model student who shows respect for others and herself, and we are so proud of the young adult she is turning into. Congratulations, you are so deserving of this recognition. Do you want to say anything?
I'll just say one thing. I'll brag a little bit. She was on the volleyball team, the eighth grade team, with my granddaughter, and they had a phenomenal year, and I think it was, you won the tournament after six years of losing the tournament in the eighth grade. So, they did a really great job with a lot of kids. I give their coach the credit, and these kids, they worked hard together. So, congratulations. Mr. Hurdle is a seventh grade science teacher and the team leader for the seventh grade Seekers team. Mr. Hurdle has been teaching for 25 years. What many know about Mr. Hurdle is that he loves his content and teaching students, has a great sense of humor, and is a great team player. What is special thought about Mr. Hurdle is his natural ability to build relationships with students and support not only their learning in the classroom but growth as young men and women. He dedicates much energy into teaching students right from wrong, modeling appropriate behavior, and giving students a chance to succeed. We are thankful to have a great teacher at Strongsville Middle School, but also to have Mr. Hurdle and the special ways he creates engaging lessons and genuine relationships. Thank you. Sounds great. It sounds great.
Would you like to say something, Mr. Hurdle? When we went in there to award both the student and the staff member this time, they're both of their classes kind of erupted in applause and congratulations, and we're very, very excited for you guys, and it was nice to see because obviously that's not only just coming from Mrs. Boydham and her decision and thought of you, but those classmates that are in those classes that think the exact same thing, that were cheering and congratulating and giving many reasons why they love Mr. Hurdle. For example, like, oh, who wants to name something? Middle school students, how many are going to raise their hand and want to talk to some strangers they don't know? They're all raising their hand, all the things they love about Mr. Hurdle. So, it was great to see, and they said that he made teaching or he made learning a very fun experience. So, that is a very wonderful thing to see, and thank you both of you.
Logan and Mark, before you leave, I think it's important, come back over here. If you could just come around. I mean, that's phenomenal, right? The recognition that you deserve. So, we'd like to shake your hands. So, if you come around here, come inside. Logan, why don't you start? Mr. Hurdle's looking nervous. It looks like he needs you to lead him.
Congratulations, teacher.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm nervous when you guys came in the room that day. I'm not going to lie.
For some reason, every administrator thinks it's funny not to say what we are doing. So, when we walk in for a student, like, the principal will walk in, and the kids are like, uh-oh. And like, surrounded by, like, your assistant principals, and they'll call the student, and the kid's always like, oh, no. Same thing for the teachers. They'll be like, oh, we're just here with a couple of board members. We're changing that.
So, but it is, it is nice to recognize our students that are doing the right thing and are being model Mustangs and letting other students, younger, and their classmates, know how to be a good student and how to be a good teacher. So, I think that's wonderful, and I think it's also nice, and we want to thank the parents and the spouses of the, and the children that came to support, to support our students and our teachers. So, that's wonderful.
When they get to leave, remember that.
Maybe go to dinner?
And some of them have homework that still needs to get done. So, they're, they're able to leave, but if they want to stay for the five-year forecast presentation, it is really, really very exciting.
You're welcome.
So, next on, next on our agenda is public comment. I do have one slip from Michael Wolf. I don't think I've seen you before, Michael, so name, address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. So, my name is Michael Wolf. My address is 425 Walnut Drive, and the topic today that I wanted to discuss was in particular classrooms, size and, size in particular. So, it was brought to my attention that student classroom sizes at Maraski Elementary School in particular might exceed the current limits set forth in Ohio Vise Code. It's also my understanding that the music program must utilize rolling carts as opposed to having a designated room for instruction. So, in my opinion, it appears that there might be overcrowding at that particular school, and I was wondering if there was any comments from the board.
Well, what I can share with you is the Facilities Development Committee, we're currently working through those issues. On a week from today, on Thursday, the Facilities Development Committee is going to visit Kinsner. I don't remember when we're visiting Maraski, but we're going to be visiting all of our elementary schools. The Facilities Development Committee is a bit, a committee of the board. It's open to the public. So, it, the schedule is on our website, but if you can't find it, send us an email, and we'll get you the information. But come join us, and it almost feels like a softball question, Michael, because we're working on these issues right now.
That's excellent. Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's not going to be a well-kept secret that we're talking about new elementary schools.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yeah, that was all. Take care.
And next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report. George, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. All right. So, for tonight's meeting, I have the five-year forecast presentation as a discussion item, and then presented tonight, then it'll be on the board, Agenda for Adoption at the November 22nd meeting, and then it'll be, once it's adopted, a version needs to be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education by the end of November. This is an item that we need to do twice a year. It's due by November 30th, and again by May 31st. The November forecast I kind of use to begin the fiscal year, our fiscal year begins in July. We adopt the budget in September. From July to September, we do a temporary budget, and then I also like, when we do the budget in September, also do a budget forecast. So, this is kind of an update from the September forecast that I did, and the difference between this and now is looking at any revenues that have come in that may have changed since then, and then also trending out of our expenditures for personnel based on current payrolls through the, I was able to utilize today's pay. We do payroll in a couple of days in advance, so I was able to get the November 10th payroll in there and forecast out the rest of the year for personnel, and then the non-personnel items, still going with the bud, still going with the budget trends based with the, what each department has in their line item budgets. And then in the May forecast, kind of just trending out everything based the remaining payrolls, remaining months, kind of taking average of what we spend in the non-personnel lines and trending those out, but it's really setting the baseline for the upcoming fiscal year's budget as we do that planning, that budget planning, kind of using that next year as, all right, this is what we set our budget. Can we afford that? So, it kind of sets the stage for that. So, so with that, this is the, the November forecast was kind of, kind of a budget update, or an update from the budget forecast. So, same format, we have our major assumptions and our revenues, expenditures, and summary at the end. There are major assumptions from the September forecast to this forecast. Property taxes have not changed. Still have the same assumptions at that time. We've collected all the property taxes we're going to collect in the year as they're collected in July and August, and then again in January, February, March. What will change here shortly is the assessed valuations for the upcoming year. Those are usually given out by the county in December. So, that can kind of drive what our tax collections are for the upcoming year, but with House Bill 920, the tax rate should balance out, but we do have some changes, whether up or down, depending on how the valuations go for those items that are not subject to House Bill 920. The other thing with the major assumptions for revenue, just when you're comparing the forecast, property taxes from last year to this year look a little higher. It's because last year, and you can tell from the year before as well, there was a slight dip due to a issue with the mall and the, and the sale and the decrease in value and the refund that brought down the tax collections for fiscal year '22. So, that's why that one looks down. I want to keep that in the assumptions just so when people are looking at the numbers, they, they know why that's dipped. And then also the forecast assumes that we have two renewal levies. We have one that's coming up that will expire in tax year December 31st, 2023, and collections will continue through, through December 31st, 2024. So, when that expires, I have to show it on the forecast as it coming off, and then at the bottom of the forecast, I can show it coming back on if approved. And then, our second renewal that was passed last November, it'll be up again. It'll expire December 31st, 2026, and collections will continue through December 31st of 2027. State funding, currently we're being funded on the state foundation formula that was adopted with the current, that was adopted in the current BNIAM budget, which will end at the end of this fiscal year. So, the talks for the new BNIAM budget should start here after the new year. I think the governor is supposed to release the budget. I think sometime in February and March, we'll start seeing the impact, if they make any impact to state funding with the overhaul of the fund, of the funding formula from last time to this time. Hopefully, there's not too many changes, but the one thing I do want to bring up is one of the items that, as a district, we need to watch for as part of the funding formula, there is a guaranteed amount that was set by law in the last funding formula. So, if they, they have to make a legislative change to touch the guarantee, but if they do do that, of our $7.6 million of foundation funding, 1.3 or 1.4 million or five point, five and a half percent is guaranteed. So, if something happens to that guarantee, that's, that's at risk. So, we, something we need to follow during the funding formula, or if they make any other changes to the funding formula, we usually don't get impacted in a positive way. So, just to kind of team that up as, that process will begin after the first of the year. And the forecast assumes the current funding formula as is for the remaining years. With, with the change in the foundation formula, there was, there was dollars that were in unrestricted aid that got shifted to restricted aid, and those are success and wellness. Those were previously actually given as a grant in another fund. Now, those are part of the foundation formula as a restricted line, meaning you still got the same number of dollars, but you have to meet the spending criteria. So, for this school year, it's $211,000. Career Tech, $34,000, right around what we used to receive for that. DPIA, which is disadvantaged youth, it's about $48,000, and that's a restricted line, and one of the items you can spend it on is security. So, our SSOs meet that criteria. And then gifted is a new category for restricted. You have, for us, we have to spend at least $191,000 on gifted, which we do above that with our gifted teachers. So, in total, the, for the upcoming fiscal year, the restricted aid is about $485,000. This is a chart that I had in last time for the budget forecast. I decided to leave it in to kind of give a picture of our person, our personnel for this year. And this is all funds, not just the general fund, as the forecast is only the general fund. Our year-over-year change for this fiscal year, we're at 776 positions in these different categories, which is an increase of 14 positions, and the primary increase in the positions is due to, we had eight new teaching positions due to need, three new aid positions due to additional need and enrollment, the assistant athletic director position, and two temporary positions to cover long-term absences, which you can see in the chart that in 2024, those positions will fall off. And then in the forecast for fiscal year '25, which is the year that the ESRA funds expire, that it's forecasting 12 ESRA positions will be coming onto the general fund. So, that is something we need to continue to evaluate, but as of now, those positions are included within the general fund. And then healthcare premiums. In fiscal year '21, we saw a 3% increase. In '22, we saw a 1.37% increase, but unfortunately, this fiscal year, we, we saw our biggest increase in recent years at 8.7% increase in our premium funds, and since we are self-insured, our premiums are set based on our actual claims that we're receiving. And for fiscal years '24 to '27, the projected annual increase is 8%. This was a category I was considering increasing between when I did the September forecast to now, but after talking it over with our consultant for our healthcare, we decided to leave it at eight for now, continue to monitor claims, and if we need to make an adjustment, make it in May. The other reasoning behind that between, over the course of the forecasts in '24, in fiscal years '24 to '27, 8% annually each year times four, it's 32%. So, our thought is it should remain in that range over the four-year period. We might see a year that might be higher, then a year might be lower. So, we'll continue to monitor and see what the trends are and, and make any adjustments as necessary. And then when you're comparing the, the forecasts in the prior years for 2020 and 2021, those were years where the district saw closures due to the pandemic. So, some expenditures might be lower in those years compared to the, compared to a normal year. So, keep that in mind as you're looking at the financials for the forecast. Purchased services, during fiscal year '23, purchased services increased by 1.2 million. The increase is due to increased costs and placement for special education placements, instructional service costs such as RAS Kids. There was a cost for every three years, the secondary edemen, online, which was previously funded through ESRA, and then an ELA and math diagnostic program, and projected increases for utility costs. And then we also saw material supplies increased by $669,000 from '22 to '23, which is primarily due to fiscal year '22 budget savings or unspent budget that was brought back up to normal levels, and then also under materials and supplies is the transportation fuel. I had budgeted $350 for transportation fuel, which is $35,000 per month, based on the current, per month, over 10 months, but based on current trends, projecting about $380 for this year, and then for the next four years, I increased it by $50,000 to $400,000. So, continue to see how gas prices are, particularly diesel, and kind of adjust in those areas. The other thing I keep in the slides, just as reminders, all, all of our extra expenditures, other than our general funds, but just to kind of show what we've used those ESRA dollars for, going back all the way to ESRA 1, now ESRA 2, and now ESRA 2 and 3, and then what we're planning on spending in '22 and '20, this year and next year with our ESRA 2 and ESRA 3 dollars that are remaining. Any, can we get any detail on this? It's the same that we've been talking about in prior months. So... Any questions before I go into revenues on the assumptions? So, revenues, our biggest category revenues is local taxes, which is about 75% of our revenues, and then state foundation makes up 10%. State of Ohio reimbursements are about 7.4%. TIF is about 3.1%, and all other revenues are 4.5%. So, majority of our taxes, or majority of our revenue come from local property taxes. And then year-over-year, as I stated, in fiscal year '22, we saw a little bit of a dip, and then it's going back to normal levels in '23, and as you can see, it's kind of sustained from '23 to '27, but this, in '25 is the half year, the renewal, then '26 and '27 is the, the full years coming off. Look, the public utility, or the pub, public utility taxes, as you can see, those have increased year after year. This is assessed valuation that is not subject to House Bill 920, and it's the value of public utility, pub, public utility throughout the, within the school district, and on average, we've seen a 6.7% increase year-over-year, and the forecast assumes that same percentage. So, something that we'll need to keep on monitoring, whether that's an aggressive percentage increase or if it remains the same. State foundation for 2023, this is the unrestricted portion of it. We're collecting $8.2 million, $8.2 million. From '21 to '22, there was a decrease. It was because of the new funding formula as the past few dollars have been taken out, which was the reason for the decrease. And then '23 through '27 is based on the current structure, and as of October, it's been updated through the October data that we're seeing through OD. State foundation restricted, with a change in those other categories, we used to only receive about $72,000, but as dollars shifted from unrestricted to restricted, we see the increase, we see the increase in the restricted aid, and then in the out years, the, it's decreasing, but it's a shift from restricted to unrestricted as our requirements that we're required to spend are less in those categories. So, that's the reason for the decrease. It's not at all overall decrease in revenues, it's just shifting buckets. Property tax allocation, that's the homestead and rollback, out, reimbursements back from the state, and those have been consistent year-over-year. Other revenues from December to, from the, not December, from the September to this forecast, this is where I may have made the biggest change, and it's related to interest income. As interest rates been going up, right now, our Star Ohio rate is 3.7%. Interest revenue, it's the highest since I've been here in the district, and I think as I've been in this role overall, last year, we were under a percent. So, as, as we've seen, interest revenue for September and October exceed $100,000 for each month. It was, I needed to take a look at that number for the forecasting and adjust. So, for this fiscal year, based on that current Star Ohio rate of return, our investments with Meter was able to get it break down month by month. We're projecting about 1.3 million in interest revenue from what I had budgeted in September. That's an increase of $584,000. Then I had $750,000. And then in 2024, increased interest from, or increased interest from $700,000 to the 1.3, which is about a $500,000 increase, and assuming an overall rate of return of about 1.75. And then in 2025, an overall rate of return of 1.5, increase that from $700,000 to 1.1. And then same concept each year, just decreasing the rate of return each year as, don't know if these rates will continue to be sustained or as the, as the federal government's trying to adjust the inflation that these might normalize back to where they were. So, something that we need to watch and a little hard to predict in years four and five, as well as year three, but just looking at where the numbers are now, and we'll continue to look at them and, and make adjustments as necessary. And then the other categories that make up other revenues is preschool tuition, four-day kindergarten tuition, tuition from other districts for out-of-district students that were court placed, pay-to-play, catastrophic cost reimbursements from the state, Medicaid reimbursements, and then the TIF reimbursements. Other financing sources, in 2021, we had a big spike, which was due to a $1.1 million BWC dividend and refund payment, and then in '22 and '23, those are primarily due to dollars that the, the general fund paid for and was reimbursed back by the ESRA funds when they were received. And then also return of advances that, at the end of the year, when we do an advance to federal funds to cover any deficits, those dollars are advanced back once the dollars are received. So, that's in this category. So, any questions on revenues? I thought you were going to say something.
I'm, I'm mulling the interest rate conversation, and, you know, no one has a good crystal ball. So, I, I appreciate the, using the best information we have for the short term, and then being a little more conservative for the long term to give us as accurate, or accurate as a tool as we can.
Right.
But, you know, on the one hand, $500,000 is a lot of additional interest revenue. On the other hand, when we consider inflation and our purchase, purchase services and everything else, it's not enough.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Expenditures, where our money goes. Salaries and benefits is our biggest category, which makes up about 83.8, 83.8% or 67.4 million. And then it's purchased services, which is about 9% of our total budget. Material supplies, which is about 3.2%, and all other objects, which is about 2.9%. Salary and benefit, salaries. Salaries are based on actual salaries, based on the positions and the people that we have, and moving them along on the salary schedule, and based on any increases that we currently know in the contracts. It doesn't predict any future increases, just based on the information that we know now, and moving every employee on the, where they're currently at on the schedule, moving them accordingly each year. Same with benefits. It's based on where everyone's employee, or every employee is right now with their benefit coverage, and their, and who's taking benefits and who's not, their type of coverage, and then moving them each year in the fiscal year, and then also projecting a 8% increase per year on the premium rate. And then the other increases that go along with benefits is, as salaries increase, there's those benefits that have a percentage increase such as SRS, STRS, and the Medicare that is based off a percentage of salary. Purchased services, we saw a slight decrease from '22 to, '21 to '22, which is due to the, some of the past few dollars that we no longer had to show as expenditures through the state foundation formula, and then the slight increase in '23 is based on... And then the slight increase in twenty-three is based on um, the, the programs that I talked about in the assumptions. Then also there was some, also unspent budget too that's added back as well. Supplies and materials, um, again, in twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-three, there was about a six hundred thousand increase, which was due to unspent bu- unspent budget, adding that back. And then also increasing the fuel costs, um, based as, or projections I stated earlier. So what makes up uh, material supplies is instructional supplies of four hundred thousand dollars, office supplies about eighty-three thousand across the district. Uh, textbooks close to about half a million. All the software programs, which is about three hundred seventeen thousand. Fuel about four hundred thousand and building supplies, building and cleaning supplies for custodial about two to three hundred thousand. Capital outlay, um, about seven hundred fifty-
George?
Yeah.
Are you considering looking at some of those for the next forecast?
Like increasing any of the percentages?
Yeah, just increasing it based on inflation and the other one would be things like textbooks, et cetera. Now that we have a, a demographic study that's projecting uh, student population increases, should we take a look at that and how that affects things?
I haven't yet, just because going with the increase of the six hundred thousand that was unspent. So if, once we start spending our budget as a whole, um, every year, then I'll consider taking a look at it. Well, I would factor it in, but right now there's, there's, there's savings across the budget, so does it wash out?
Okay.
Um, it's something I can take a look at as between now and the next meeting. Um, but I don't want to increase it-
The next forecast, not the next meeting.
Okay. But it's one of those things where I've thought about is, do you increase it? And then you still have the savings that you normally get year over year, and does it kind of wash out with, with that as well?
Yeah, I, I think we, it'll be interesting to look at uh, uh, inflation factors. Once we have some hard numbers, more, more hard numbers on actual purchase and see what's happening.
And the other thing, I've kind of had that conversation with um, with Jenny about, do we also look at increasing salaries? Positions through those years too, but as of, as of now, we have the students that we have and right now don't have anywhere else to put them. So at what point do we start increasing, predicting increases in personnel in those out years as well?
George, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, in building and cleaning supplies from twenty-three to twenty-four, why is there a hundred and forty thousand dollars? What are we cleaning?
The difference between twenty-three and twenty-four?
Two thirty-one to three seventy-two.
Yeah, so what I did for twenty-three is I looked at where their budgets are now.
Okay.
So what might have happened is um, Steve might move budget around from di- from that category.
Okay.
To different categories based on need, whether it's purchase services for the maintenance or capital. He kind of uses his, um, that line to kind of adjust for other needs.
Got it.
So for right now, that's what's in that line as he's moved those, or as he moved money for, for different needs. But for twenty-four to twenty-seven, that's where those, that's where the dollars are for those years.
Okay.
And where the, and the lines where he moved it to, it's back to those original numbers that were there at the beginning of this quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Our general fund debt, um, we have a debt coming off after next fiscal year, so leave us with one on the general fund. Uh, other objects, uh, seventy-two percent of this is made up of county auditor fees of nine hundred thousand. Then a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand for insurance liability. And then our transfers for advances, uh, this is where we transfer fu- dollars to other funds to cover negatives. So for this upcoming school, or for this school year, um, don't know if it's needed, but it's a placeholder. I have a hundred thousand dollars for food service. Last year was our first year that we had a, that we didn't have to do a transfer of food service. Um, but since last year to this year, uh, I won't say the program changed, but how it was funded by the government changed. Where last year everyone was covered with uh, with free lunch. This year, that, that's not the case. So we just got to watch how food service is performing. The uniform school supplies, uh, the termination benefits fund, uh, this is where the fund that when employees um, retire, where we pay after sick, sick leave, we transfer the money over from the general fund into this fund. It's, as it's not impacted or per pupil spend. Um, last year we spent about two hundred ten thousand, um, looking at the payments that we're gonna, we make the payments every January. Um, look at the payments we're gonna do for this year. Um, originally I had this budgeted at two fifty, um, but we're actually gonna spend about four twenty-five. And then in the out years, I had three hundred thousand in the September forecast, but now we're look, now I just, I went through since this year was off um, to see what our five-year average was. And our five-year average is about four hundred thousand. So I use the fo- five-year average for the remaining years in the forecast. And then the other change that I had in the forecast, originally we had a transfer of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for, to move to the PI fund for the HVAC system at Kinsner. But um, after talking with Dr. Iber and Mr. Brechner, that doesn't look like it's gonna happen during this fiscal year, so we moved it to next fiscal year. I think those are conversations to have with the facilities committee to us as they're evaluating buildings is um, looking at when we ma- we make some of these investments in the buildings. Any questions on expenditures?
Do you have any idea about how we're trending so far with food service this year?
No, I wanna, I'll, I'll, um, at the next meeting when I do my financial report.
Okay.
I'll take a look at the September, at the October data.
Okay.
So with the first month with September, it's um, August is thrown in there, so you have August, September. And it doesn't really kick up until you start getting into the winter months.
Okay.
So once I get the October data, it'll give us a better kind of indication versus just September. So I'll um, I'll add a slide to my month-end report for uh, the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, and one, before I move on, any other questions? The five-year forecast summary, um, at, based on the current revenues of eighty-six point six million, current expenditures of eighty point four million, uh, will be revenues over expenditures by six point two million this year, leaving a um, cash balance of sixty-eight point five million. Then in twenty twenty-four, as our expenditures increase a little bit, um, that revenues over expend, revenues over expenses is about three point one million. And then in twenty twenty-five, as um, the renewal levy begins to expire, uh, taking that out, will be deficit spending by three point two million. And then when the renewal levy is completely out in twenty-six, will be deficit spending by nine point five million. And then twenty twenty-seven, will be deficit spending by um, ten point seven million. And then if the, if that renewal levy was renewed, um, we would be um, sustained through twenty twenty-six and slightly deficit spending in twenty twenty-seven. That concludes the presentation, if there's any questions?
Any questions? So uh, some people find it dry, some people find it very exciting. I uh, will not admit to which one I prefer, but I will thank you for all the hard work it, uh, we all know how much work and how many hours are put in. But this is the tool that lets us uh, do the things we do in the district, so it's important and we all appreciate the hard work you do.
Thank you.
And the next, next meeting will vote on it.
Correct.
And it'll get sent down to Columbus.
Right. And then if I also, between next meeting and, this meeting and next meeting, if I get any material um, information that could have an impact, I'll incorporate that in the forecast as well. And then these are the, this is attached to the agenda, but this is the actual exhibit that has the, the statements and assumptions that will be approved at the meeting and submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. All right, so the next item I have for you, it is a consent action item, but it is be resolved upon the recommendation that the treasurer, that the collection of fees to support costs associated to intramural activities be approved. Um, so what this is, as we now have moved forward with middle school intramurals, um, there are some intramural sports that are outside of the district that may have associated costs with. Um, and uh, Jason Kepler, our middle school athletic director, recommended um, these fees for um, this activity. So if, right now we only have bowling, so similar to the class fees that we approve at the beginning of the school year. Uh, we're moving forward, once we have all the intramurals figured out and adopted, we'll do one schedule and approve it at the beginning of the school year. But right now, as they're coming on, we'll do it based on season by season. We'll continue to build onto this list if there's any other ones. Uh, but right now, the reason why I have the, this meeting is that they're starting uh, next week. Um, they have bowling and what Jason's rec, what Mr. Kepler is recommending is for the first session, uh, forty dollars to charge for those students. And then the second session, uh, seventy dollars, and it's to offset the lane and shoe rental expense. And the difference between uh, the first session, the second section is uh, the number of, of weeks that those, um, those will occur. So it's ten dollars per week. The first session has four weeks, the second session has seven weeks. So again, it's just to offset the cost of the lane and the shoe rental expense for the bowling.
I'm looking forward to seeing how many uh, middle schoolers bowl.
Yeah.
So um, and just uh, it, I'm comfortable with the, the fees, et cetera, but I'm curious, if you already own your own shoes and you bring your own shoes, can you br- pay a, a lower rate?
I'll uh-
We'll find out.
I'll have Mr. Kepler work that out.
Once upon a time, I knew someone who uh, joined a bowling league. Joined a bowling league and he did the math and now owns a pair of bowling shoes.
Yeah, and there was also discussions that we were having too, what happens if uh, someone misses and-
But maybe.
They'll take it.
Their dad.
You know, someone else who has bowling shoes and bowling glove and all the, all the uh, cool stuff.
All right, that concludes my report, there's no other questions.
Any other questions for George? Thank you, George. Next on our agenda is superintendent's report, Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Uh, we do have, I do have one discussion item. As you may recall, a few months ago, we talked about um, uh, spring supple, or we talked about supplemental contracts in the study that we did. Uh, and I presented to you my recommendations for additional supplemental contracts for a variety of athletics and activities. Uh, and uh, the board uh, gave me consensus to go ahead and make those additions for winter sports. And those are in action, uh, are starting in action now. Um, and you asked me to come back with each season at a time. So uh, in the upcoming agenda, you will be considering spring supplemental, so it's time to start taking a look at this. So it's linked to the agenda, um, and George has put it on the board for everybody. So a part of the recommendations just for spring sports, um, as you can see at the high school, is adding that varsity assistant coach. We talked a lot about that during uh, the winter time, that compared to our other area schools, our other similar leagues. During past cuts, we reduced varsity assistant coaches. So um, at the high school level, where typically schools have four coaches, four freshmen, JV, and varsity altogether, we have three. Um, and as we look at the demands on coaches and sports and uh, being competitive in our league, uh, we feel that this is a, a well meaning investment. Uh, so as you could see, uh, baseball, uh, we're recommending one varsity assistant coach. We really have, I mean, this is a, this is a must-have for us. Uh, because if you look at how baseball uh, actually schedules their games, we uh, struggle to have enough coaches to uh, separate. We have a lot of volunteer coaches or coaches that split contracts, so that's how we make it work. Um, but when they're in different locations, uh, that's a key add um, for baseball. And we're looking to do the same for softball, to add a varsity assistant coach. Uh, for lacrosse, uh, you'll see there's two supp- supplemental contracts recommended, same idea, varsity assistant coach. But that would be for one for the boys program and one for the girls program. Uh, and then we're also recommending a track assistant coach. Our numbers have really gone through the roof for track. Uh, and then what this would allow is, it would allow uh, an assistant coach to s- to be uh, specifically focused on an event. We're one short in our assistant coaches for an event. Uh, and this would allow a coach not, to not have two events that they're coaching, but have one event uh, dedicated. Uh, and then as we shared, or George shared with the last item for intramurals, we're looking for intramurals to be a year-long program. Uh, you approved the winter uh, aspect of intramurals in addition to bowling. Uh, so bowling, I think right now is slated for Tuesdays. Uh, on Thursdays, they will be doing basketball. Uh, so they're doing two nights a week, uh, and then they've got surveys that Jason just did with kids to see what would be interests, or what their interests are. And then they'll look for, they've got a variety of different activities they're looking at, but they'll pick uh, two more nights where they want to do two different activities uh, for uh, spring intramurals, should uh, this be approved uh, by the board. So as you could see there, the total investment from the district for this is a little over thirty thousand dollars uh, for this school year. What I'm looking for from the board is consensus uh, to move forward. Uh, what that means is if you say, okay, Cameron, we're okay with all of this or some of this, uh, Jenny could then tell our athletic department, uh, here's the coaches, uh, the coaches that you have to recommend. Uh, and then your actual approval of that would be when they appear on a future board agenda. So um, Mr. Miko, that's what I wanted to update and uh, see if we can get some direction moving forward for spring sports.
Any, any questions on the plan?
I just have one question. Um, is the intramurals, like the time that's invested in terms of the two days a week? I don't know how many hours comparable, seeing as it's um, ha- um, less than half the percentage?
Yeah, so what we did, that's a great question, Michelle. So what we did is we took a look at and said, um, for supplemental contracts that are commensurate with the intramurals, how often are they meeting? Um, and so that's what they came up with, the, the intramural advisors and Jason said, hey, we think, they asked, we feel two would be representative of that pay and what other advisors are doing. Um, are you o- okay with that? Uh, and if you take a look at it a different way, you could say, most middle school coaches, assistant coaches are making ten-ish percent, around ten percent. This is half of that, most middle school coaches are coaching four days a week. Half of that is two days a week, so that's kind of, both of those rationales is, uh, rationales are how we got to that, two days a week.
Okay, thank you.
And the question from my understanding, although they're varsities, um, will they be able to coach across, you know, whether it's freshmen, junior varsity, or what have you? Um, they'll be able to help wherever it's needed?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, and then uh, the only other question I had is, are, do we anticipate having any difficulty filling the positions?
I, I, you know, I-
Because we did, we had that with the, the previous one, so if we're gonna be putting them out, I think we need to be cognizant of whether, whether we anticipate a problem. Because we're having la- I'm not surprised that supplemental contracts, we're having a labor, uh, a labor problem like buses and everything else.
What I would share at the high school level with existing sports is we have been blessed to have a lot of volunteers uh, that are there. And we have people that just want to volunteer and vol- continue to volunteer. Um, but based on uh, coaching at this level, I'll let Jenny fill in the, the details there. Uh, but I feel that we are in a good spot to fill those positions uh, more than some of the other challenges that we've had. Jenny, any thoughts you have?
I don't know, I, I, this probably is more my opinion, but you know, based on the conversations we had with the coaches when they went through this exercise and, and had the ask of what they wanted, I, I know they've, they've wanted this, they feel they needed it. And, and I do feel like they're gonna put a lot of time and energy to try to get somebody that's going to fill the position and, and obviously help their, their program. They're pretty invested in it, so hopefully that, that search will go well. And, and we've had some other positions recently where coaches, the head coaches are actively searching and their, their contacts and their connections and through colleges and everything, so hopefully we can.
Good. And then, uh, you know, just to say it out loud, you know, we were, I, I wouldn't want anyone in the public thinking, why are we, why are we switching volunteer positions to paid posi- paid posi- paid positions? But the expectations are certainly different when, when it's a paid position, the evaluations. I know, uh, I know Jason and Denny are doing a great job on, on making sure that those expectations are set and, and then, so.
And, and we will see, Mr. Miko, and that's a great point, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, and, but I, based on what happened in winter, most of our volunteers want to stay as volunteers uh, and, and just have this being an add to the program as well, so.
That's nice to hear.
Yeah.
So unless someone is, disagrees, let's move forward.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And I know on behalf of our athletic department and coaches, they appreciate your support. And uh, at the upcoming meetings, uh, we'll keep you posted on how we're doing with the hiring for those assistants. Moving on, um, we do have one item under curriculum for your consideration. As we've talked a lot about, congratulations to our varsity girls soccer team. I think Mr. Winkler, I was at a NHS ceremony last night and he made the comment that, you know, making a state championship game is really a rare and special thing. We're, we're a little spoiled here in Strongsville. I think it's been three in the last five or six years, state championship games we've been in. Uh, but congratulations, this is years and years of work, uh, and we have a phenomenal program, so- This is years and years of work, and we have a phenomenal program, so this is, they probably have already left to go down to Columbus to get ready for the game tomorrow. But be it resolved upon the recommendation, my recommendation, that permission be granted for the Strongsville Girls Varsity Soccer Team to travel to Columbus, Ohio to participate in the OHSAA Girls Soccer State Championship Game, November tenth through the eleventh. Transportation will be via chartered motor coach, and expenses will be paid by the Strongsville Athletic Booster. So again, a special thank you to the boosters who always take care of food and lodging during the state tournaments. And a special shout out to one of our community businesses, Jersey Mike's, unsolicited. They reached out to me yesterday and said, hey, what can we do to help support? We have two Spirit buses going down to Columbus tomorrow, and they, we have sixty subs that will provide lunch for the kids as they go down. So thank you to Jersey Mike's for being a great community partner and supporting our kids on this exciting time. Any questions on curriculum?
So if that would somehow fail, would we have to call them and turn the buses?
With that, I'm going to ask Andy Trujillo, our Director of Student Services, to come to the podium for his items for this evening. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. I have two items for you to consider this evening. One is Soliant Health. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into a client service agreement with Soliant Health to provide speech and language pathologist services for the summer extended school year 2022, and during the school year 2022 to 23, to cover unfilled vacancies and long-term absences effective May 27, 2022. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into a client assignment confirmation agreement with Soliant Health for Geraldine Asbury, speech-language pathologist, start date October 17, 2022, end date January 17, 2023. Four days per week, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Bill rate, eighty-eight dollars an hour. Overtime bill rate, one hundred thirty-two dollars an hour, and she will be working twenty-eight hours a week. Any questions?
Just as a clarification, Andy, we have, we have an overtime rate listed, but the language says there's no overtime, so I want to be clear that there's no overtime.
There is not, yes. And further clarification would be, it says minimum twenty-eight. It's really a maximum of twenty-eight. It's just kind of their procedural service agreement and how it's written. The second is for Power School. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Power School Group to provide Unified Insights platform, Unified Insights student essentials, Unified Insights MTSS, Unified Insights one-time discount, professional services and setup fees, and training services, and all the setup monitoring fees associated with that. Contract term is thirty-two months from November 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025. The initial term is from November 1, 2022, through June 30, 2024, and the amount is seventy-four thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars, twenty-eight cents, with twenty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars due December 1, 2022, forty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents due July 1, 2023. Annual ongoing fees total forty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars as of July 1, 2024, with fees subject to an annual uplift, which will be reflected on the renewal quote. Any questions about that?
Can you give us a short summary on what the software does for the school?
Sure. Yeah, that, it's Unified Insights is Power School's new reporting solution, as they call it. And so this Unified Insights will take the place of a current program we have for student analytics through Frontline, which is called Five Labs, which kind of is a dashboard for all of our data in terms of enrollment, attendance, discipline, grades, and that sort of thing. It's also going to combine a service we get through Performance Managers, RTI Analytics. They are no longer supporting that program. This is their new solution. So when we found out about that, we said, well, hold on, what, we, we need what you're going to support for the future. So in some ways, we're taking two services, two subscriptions we have, and we're putting them into one. Does that make sense? Okay.
Anything we can do to tell them to stop, stop selling us a software that they know they're going to get rid of in a year and a half?
That's the million dollar question right there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next up, we have our Assistant Superintendent, Jenny with, Pelco, with the Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Thank you. I have four items for your consideration this evening. We have the retirement of a certified staff member. We have a MOU, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted. And I do believe this one requires a separate vote. Yes?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Housen, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion?
Real quick, the MOU is going to cross our fingers, help us with our bus drivers, and we're going to incentivize people to become the bus drivers. Do you want to describe the, the fees that they have to incur, and we're going to incentivize them to take care of that?
Sure. So for somebody, this is, I guess, a plea as well, so if you're interested...
This is a commercial.
Commercial, yeah, infomercial. So if you're interested in becoming a bus driver with us, we now will reimburse the costs that it takes to do that. So there are associated costs with getting your CDL, getting your bus passenger endorsement, and, and going through the training, and, and so that compensation will cover all of those costs, including fingerprinting, when they, when they complete that. So additionally, if you stay on with us, there are additional incentives, and it goes incrementally up until two years if you're staying with us. So we want to train you, and then we want you to stay with us and, and be a bus driver. So if anybody is interested, you know, you can contact me or my office, and we'll get you started in, into that process. So I think it's a move in the right direction to help, you know, appreciate the staff that we have and appreciate them, and, and make sure that they are staying with us as we train them, because it is a, a lot of time that, that we put into training. We have onboard instructors who put in a lot of time to training these drivers, so once we do all of that work, we want them to stay.
Agreed. Any other questions or discussion? George, take the roll.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Is it Bissel?
Yes.
Is this Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Under I three, we have an appointment for non-certificated athletic supplemental contract. And finally, under I four, we have a correction, I believe, but be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the amounts listed in the revised attached exhibit be paid to Strongsville City Schools personnel and non-personnel for performance as game workers for the 2022-2023 school year, amounts to be paid through arbiter pay from the athletic fund, and...
I can add on to what that is.
Go ahead, George.
So there was a typo when we passed the original resolution, that it was discovered by the athletic department. So for our, and there was no change from the year before. What actually happened was we would have been paying them less than the year before. So our ticket takers and our ticket sellers that work two levels, which is a JV and varsity on the same night, so it impacts soccer, wrestling, swim, or soccer in the fall, and then wrestling, swimming, and basketball in the, in the, in the winter months, that rate should be forty-five dollars. And when we had the previous agenda, it was thirty-five dollars. So it was just a copy and paste error that wasn't discovered until we started paying them, and we realized they were, they were short. So it's just a correction.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for Jenny?
Next up, we have Dave Binkley, Director of Instructional Technology, with an item for this month. Dave?
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following amendment to include the additional fund be made. Amendment to Agenda, March 24, 2022, Item F, Technology Two, Technology Upgrades, 2022-2023 School Year. Originally read Zero Zero One General Fund for the purchase of Chromebooks, computers, Google Chrome Management Licenses, not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Now amend to allow the use of both the Zero Zero One General Fund and Zero Two Three Self-Insurance One-to-One Device Fund.
Any questions for Dave?
I'm excited.
With that, that concludes my report.
Any other questions for, about the report for Cameron? Hearing none. Next on our agenda is our Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar at this point means that all items appearing on the agenda noted as type action consent are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Housen, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Mr. Mikko, before we move on to the next item, I think it was confusing, but you skipped over Board of Education other, since there was nothing in the block.
You know, this new program we have makes it really easy to hit the wrong arrows, because I was wondering where Board of Education other was.
It says right there above Consent Calendar.
You read.
You don't say. It's pretty good for me. I think she's got her glasses on.
I don't deny it. I'm just trying to find it, not that it matters. Board of Education other, do we have any others? I think we have at least one.
I have another. On November 4, I was invited to Strongsville Middle School for the Leadership Breakfast. It began with breakfast with the students. We were seated at tables with sixty-eight students at each table. We had breakfast with them, the mayor led us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a welcome. There was a keynote speaker, Dr. Regina Pestak, the Director of Medicine at Fairview Hospital. She shared personal experiences from when, before she became a Director of Medicine or even involved in medicine, things that made her doubt whether she would even be able to have a career in medicine, including getting sick in her first surgery that she was in after seeing and smelling what surgery was. And then we did a rotation of students, so we talked to each group of students for about twenty-five minutes, and the kids prepared questions about leadership, career advice, interesting things about like career pathway. And then when the event concluded, which I called the mayor signing autographs and taking pictures and handing out business cards, and kids running around saying, I got a business card from the mayor, I got a business card from the mayor. So that was a fun experience. That was November 4, and the list of different business owners in the area that were there or business leaders, we had, we had Kelly Dobek, meteorologist for WIO Channel 19, myself, owner of Caliber Dance Company, Mayor Thomas Persiak, mayor of the city of Strongsville, Dr. Regina Pestak, Director of Medicine at Fairview Hospital, Chief Mark Fender, Chief of Police, Strongsville Police Department, Chief Jack Draves, Chief of Police, or Chief of Fire, Strongsville Fire Department, Adam Tharian, the President of Transport Services, L. Mattis, I apologize if I said that wrong, Vice President, Ambulatory Operations and Business Development at Southwest General Hospital, Brian Cruz, the owner of Sergeant Clean's Car Wash, Brian Boger, Director of Parks, Recreation and Senior Services at Strongsville Recreation and Senior Center, Frank Fabrizi, the owner of Fabrizi Construction, Ashley Clark, owner of Ashley Clark Interior Design Group, Chuck Geis, TA Check Financial, Peter Shemo, who is Space Communications and Navigation Cognitive Communications Project Manager at NASA, and Amy Penny, who's the Supervisor of Elementary Curriculum in Strongsville City Schools. So it was a fun experience.
Awesome.
And I have another other, too. In my, in, I can't even talk. The professional development that took place earlier this week on Tuesday, the Strongsville Middle School and Strongsville High School counselors and two social workers went to Hope Meadows, which was a program that Sharon introduced to the board earlier this year. Website, hopemeadowsoh.org, where they have mental health counseling and life skills program. And before I continue, how do you say this, equine or equine? Equine. I queen, equine. Equine, right? But equestrian? Is it equestrian?
Equestrian, yes.
So equine, equestrian. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. It was equine assisted therapy programs that are facilitated by a mental health professional and occur in a safe and peaceful environment through the interaction with horses and nature. I spoke with Tracy Davidson, who is a counselor at Strongsville High School. They went over the curriculum with them, they use for the teams, the teens that come to the group therapy sessions. They got to participate in a few of the lessons themselves using the horses, which they found to be very amazing. Per Tracy, it was a great professional development day for the six to eight counselors, because we got to learn something really relevant to our jobs, as well as have a little self-care with the horses ourselves. The lessons we did were mindful and grounding. I know all ten of us had a valuable experience there and are already thinking of students we would like to refer to the program.
Any chance you have another other?
I don't.
I thought you said you had three.
I don't.
Okay. Does anybody else have any others?
So I will share on Saturday? Yeah, Saturday, I was at the middle school. We received an invitation from, I cannot say it, but a local group, and they had a Diwali celebration, the Festival of Lights, and it really was quite charming. It was very nice. This was their first get-together since COVID. Everything was remote or canceled prior to that, so they kind of were itching to put on a, a big production, and they actually brought in a band from India that played music and did a whole celebration. And I learned that, I was familiar with Bollywood, which is India's version of Hollywood, and they do quite a bit of cinema, movies, TV, et cetera, but there's also Tollywood, which is similar to Bollywood. It's in India, but it is for, I hope I'm saying it right, Telugu-speaking people from India. It is a, it is, I think, bigger than Bollywood, but the music that they played, the musicians that came from India played popular music from Tollywood cinema, et cetera. And it was, it was very neat because it was very modern. It was synthesizers, guitar, bass, drums, but it, you could see or see, you could hear that there was a Indian music influence on it. So it was very neat, and I'm glad they invited me, and I learned about Diwali, the Festival of Lights. So I just wanted to thank them for the invitation and give them a shout out, and they plan on coming back next year and doing this annually.
Where was it at, Rich?
At the middle school.
Oh.
So it was fun, and I'm glad I was able to attend and learn a little bit about Indian culture and, and all of those things, so that was fun. And then we're going to make sure to remember to wish Our Lady Mustangs lots and lots of good luck and bring home a win. And then it, I would be remiss if I didn't remind everyone that tomorrow is Veterans Day, so happy Veterans Day. I know some of us are going to go see our Veterans Day, performance is the wrong word, celebration at Whitney. Debbie Gonzey does a great, a great production every year, so we're looking forward to that. But anyone who served, we thank you for your service and happy Veterans Day. We do have a need for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee and to prepare for negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Housen, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes, the motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 8:15. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention, and have a good evening.